Welcome Wareham Community Television viewers. My name is Jeff Wyman with Wareham Community Television and this is Real Wareham. We are here with a select board member, Alan Slaven, and our guest today, again for the second straight show, is town moderator Margaret Ishihara. And today, we are going to be discussing town meeting, again, the processes. We did a general overview in our last program, but today, we're going to talk more specifics about motions. Who can make motions, when motions can happen? And yeah, so Margaret, take it away. Let's name some motions and who can make them and when?
Well, thank you Jeff for having me here a second time. And the major motions that you'll see at a town meeting would be the main motion on a particular warrant article, a motion to amend the language of the article, a motion for further study of whatever the article entails, and also motion for indefinite postponement. Those are the major substantive motions. There are some procedural things also that come up by way of motion, but I'll get to those, I think, in a bit. So, on the main motion, actually, anyone that is a registered voter and is at the town meeting can make a motion. But typically, and traditionally, what's happened is the main motion is made first by a member of the finance committee because they have the warrant, they've made their recommendation, so they will make their motion on all of the particular articles. Sometimes it's a motion for further study, which I'll get to. Sometimes it's just a motion to pass the article as written, as presented in the warrant. But actually, any citizens that's there, that's participating, could make a motion as well. After that, you will sometimes see at town meeting, a motion to amend. So you have your main motion, "I move to allow a dog park." You'll see, you might see a motion to amend, "Well, we want to amend that for more than one dog park," for instance.
Or like to increase the space?
To increase the space for a dog park, perhaps more than one is a bad example.
Well, with so many booths around.
We'll disregard that from the other panelists. So, assuming that there's been a second on the motion to amend, then that gets taken up first. And there'll be a debate on the motion to amend, and then a vote on that. If the motion to amend is allowed, whatever that motion to amend was, actually becomes what's called the main motion. So that becomes a motion that now, as amended, goes to the body to get voted on. And in some cases, there might be some further discussion also on that, and then there's a vote, up or down. I mentioned the motion for further study. Frankly, I think that sometimes people make a motion for further study. You see it on some of the more complicated zoning bylaw change, that sort of thing, because they maybe don't fully understand the language. Those can be complicated. Sometimes they're just opposed to it, and this is their way of doing that. But on a motion for further study, I, as moderator, would be looking for a further study with a referral to a committee to consist of whomever, and to report back to whatever. It could be the next annual town meeting, it could be the special, the town meeting in October, but not just a motion for further study to have the thing just go off into never, never land.
Yeah, it's gotta come back.
It's gotta come back. If it's really truly further study, it has to come back. And then a motion for indefinite postponement is basically what it sounds like. If someone brings a motion for indefinite postponement and it goes through, then that article loses. In the same way that it would have lost if there was a negative vote on the main motion.
I think also, Margaret, if a certain motion over a, say, like a warrant, comes up and gets rejected, is there a, I don't think I'm confusing myself, but isn't there like a two-year waiting list before you can bring it back again?
So, on zoning bylaw changes, if something gets voted down, whether it's just a negative vote on the main motion, or it's a motion for indefinite postponement that gets voted in, then there is, there's two years before you can bring that back up again. So, there's a little bit of strategy, I suppose, if you're proponent, to go with that, that perhaps you'd rather see a further study so you can come back again as opposed to, you know, if you look and you say, "Oh, I think this is going to be a negative vote," that's better. At least you have another life to come back, you don't have to wait for two years.
If someone who's a proponent of an article and a town meeting member, if they do kind of get the sense of the conversation getting a little bit negative, can they withdraw so it doesn't get voted down?
My answer may be different, but I believe we've seen that happen where someone decides, it's on the warrant, et cetera, it comes up, and then they may withdraw it right there or there, or they may just all of a sudden, as they're starting, to decide to withdraw it if they're the proponent.
Yeah, if they're the proponent, that's an interesting question. I think I'd rather see at the front end, you know, a motion to withdraw or pass over or whatever, rather than halfway through the debate.
Yeah, I think it's a little gray area.
It's a gray area whether at that point, because if it's an actual article that's in the town meeting warrant, and now it's been taken up by the town meeting, I don't know that you can withdraw it at that point.
Can you lay it on the table?
Yeah, that would be another way to say that. I didn't want to even get into that, the motion to lay on the table and all that sort of thing. I know that it's in town meeting time, and I think also Robert's Rules of Orders, I think it just gets too complicated. So, I think my point of view would be, once the article is there and is being debated, it should just, it should go to a vote. I have had situations, frankly, where someone, right before the meeting starts, says, and their proponent, "I want to withdraw." And I would allow that.
Maybe it's gotten some bad press.
Right, or maybe they've had second thoughts. I don't even look beyond what their reasoning is. It's their petition, or it's up to them.
Or they may have had their own counsel, which is what people should do, or they've had town council actually come and say, "By the way, just so you know, I've already checked with the Attorney General," because he will do that sometimes, because we're both very friendly with her. We're allowed to ask. She can't give us actually yes or no, but usually, they'll tell you, "There could be an issue." And the bottom line to it is, the town council, even though they're not, on a citizen's petition, town council's not available to the citizen's petition. It's just the way it is. But a lot of times, the question will be asked, say, by myself, town council, town council comes back and says, "Yeah, I think this is not going to work, you know, if it moves the law." And therefore, I might reach out and say, "So, you know, I'm not telling you not to go ahead and do this, but I think you're going to have a problem." Really not supposed to do that, I think, by the way.
Right, so the citizen's petition, I understand that the position of the select board is that, because they don't want to interfere also with their ancient rights, and you can't. So however the article is worded by a citizen, then that's what goes into the warrant. Oftentimes, oftentimes, something might go through, it might get voted in, but it doesn't have any legal effect, it just becomes a resolution because it's not something that lawfully could be done.
We had just recently, it bothers me because the citizens are trying to do something, and they just don't have enough background to know how to do it right, you know? So, a lot of times, I don't, not that often, but I have gone to someone who has an article, and I'm saying, "You need to rewrite your article because it's this, 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 or that."
You're talking petition articles?
Petition article. Sometimes it could be even coming from a department, you know, to say, "Hey, you know, I don't want to..." It's basically like wasting a lot of time if we do this. It goes up, comes back, gets thrown out. There's an article, I think the last town meeting we had, where a family wanted to put a bench, I think it was Swiss Beach, was it?
Yes, that's correct, right.
They had asked, you know, the Board of Select, I don't think signed off, I mean, it's what maintenance basically said that we don't want to put any benches up on that area because with the change in climate and everything else, it's probably going to get washed away, which we had a storm which would have washed it away. Actually, almost washed away the playground that we just built there. So the bottom line is, they came to town meeting as a citizen's petition, it got voted yes. It really was a resolution because the town does not have to do that. You know, when I say town, the town administrator, administration. So I watched them leave the meeting, they almost ran out of the room, they went out and bought a bench. They thought they were fine. Well, the problem is, it's a resolution for the town, it's not a requirement. And that's something that I don't think anybody ever explains, you know, and probably, the moderator would not do it, but somebody should have pulled him aside and said, "You know, just because town meeting voted yes, it doesn't mean..." There's certain things that get voted at town meeting for warrant articles, could be on the town administrator's budget, it could be something else, if it has to be promptly, et cetera, the town administrator controls. Town administrator has one nice option, like, they don't have to do it, which people don't realize it. Just because it's there, doesn't mean it has to be acted on certain types of things. And it happens, and if the money is assigned, it becomes free cash at the end of the following year anyways. But it's the way, sometimes you have a position listed in the budget, it doesn't have to be filled, you know? So you really need to understand what you're looking at, what's required and what's not required. I find that hard because people don't understand it. You know, I felt really bad at that town meeting because they were, you know, you could see how happy they were, they got what they wanted because the towns basically said no. They got what they wanted, and they found out they couldn't do what they wanted, even though they kept the vote.
This is tricky stuff, is why we're having this conversation, to help educate folks. We were talking earlier, before we started rolling, about gamesmanship, and really knowing the proceedings and how to participate as a town meeting member in the meeting, to really move things forward, and kind of the gamesmanship. I mean, we were talking about manipulation, but if you know the rules and the motions and when and what you can do, you can really have a big effect on town meeting. Am I ready?
Yeah, technically, depending on the articles come through, what they are and stuff. I mean, the further study was, I think it's completely misunderstood by the average member of town meeting. They just think, "Well, I don't like this, so I'm not, I'm going to vote for further study." It doesn't mean they really want a further study, they just don't want to vote on it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, they don't want to vote on it, but they don't want to just say no.
Yeah. They want a further study.
It's somewhat of a diplomatic way of doing that, rather than saying, "We think your idea is bad." Instead, you say, "Well, I think we need to further study your idea," right?
And then you send it to a committee, and they come back, next town meeting, and it gets brought up again with hopefully new information.
Right. The easiest thing to do in life, if you're in charge of something, is to say yes. The hardest thing to do in life is to say no. So when a salesman comes to sell you something, and you don't want to make them feel bad, so you don't say no, he says, "Uh, either let me think about it and then come back to it." They really, what they're telling you is the answer is no. They just don't want to say no.
Right.
The biggest mistake in life people make is not saying no.
We were also mentioning, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Margaret.
Oh, so with regard to motions themselves, I think I've done this both ways, I can't remember now. Citizen's petitions, which Mr. Slaven had brought up, I think my point of view on that is that the citizen should actually make the main motion. There's some, some people disagree with me about that, but I think it becomes more confusing if you have the finance committee, which traditionally makes the motions. They'll look at a citizen's petition, they don't think that it should go forward, and so they might make a motion for further study, for instance, as they're, or make a motion to amend it, or further study your indefinite postponement. And then, of course, the citizen still would like their article to go forward, and they'll get up and make a motion to amend to have it go forward. So, from my point of view, just from an ease of understanding, it makes more sense to have the citizen make the motion. Now, it does, under what's traditionally been our rule, that petitioners get five minutes, and everyone else gets two minutes to speak, it does give the petitioner, you know, that five minutes as a proponent of an article to speak. But, you know, they've taken the time to write the article and submit it, so my feeling is, make your argument.
Yeah, okay. A citizen's petition, you know, is completely, you know, as far as the Board of Select goes, we don't say yes or no. At one point in time, the Board of Select would sit there and go through all the articles and vote to put them on the warrant or not. I always felt that that was not the job of the Board of Select, but we really shouldn't be controlling the articles because we may not like it, so we'll vote no not to put it on. The citizen's articles were a way of getting around that issue, and they started to become more common for that to happen. The finance committee, the town meeting is really the finance committee's town meeting, the Board of Selectmen are up on the stage because they're there, they don't belong there technically, but that's fine, you know, because we're just one vote.
Oh, can I throw you off the stage?
Absolutely. I've always felt that way, because we're sitting up there and we're talking, or whatever, we have more of an influence than mostly anybody else, except for the finance committee. A lot of times, we're more influenced by the finance committee. So that's just my own personal opinion. But the bottom line is, a citizen's petition article, I completely agree with Margaret, the proponent should be the only one doing the initial, because the initial speech is the one that sets the tone for the town meeting members. And if the finance committee reads it and they don't like it, and they say no, they've already set the actual feeling for the town, for the body, as to where the towns are. And the proponent comes in afterwards and explains what they want, and it's very difficult. So it really should be the proponent, because citizen petition articles is a whole separate animal. The town doesn't have any say in it whatsoever.
I would tend to agree. I, absolutely.
We're going to have one citizen's petition article for expanding marijuana retail. The proponent, you know, will give different reasons, whatever else. It's going to be really interesting because I've been very heavily involved with the Cannabis Control Commission, and this whole thing, once Wareham voted to basically have marijuana in the town of Wareham, it basically locked us into having to have a minimum number of retail stores based on liquor licenses. And the state, in their infinite wisdom, with the Cannabis Control Commission, decided, whatever your number is, so say we were 2.1, as far as numbers, based on 20%, whatever. Well, they decided they were going to round the numbers up. So even though it was 0.1, it became 3, which is fine. The problem is, not only Wareham, but we had one retail store for quite a while, they did fantastic. I think they, $2.5 million generated in the first year we were down. Well, now we're down to, I think, like, half of that with three retail stores. And the reason is, there are retail marijuana stores all around us now. Matter of fact, Rochester's about to open one up. We already have a whole bunch. So what's happening is, like in Colorado and Washington, there's a proliferation, proliferation, sorry, of retail outlets, more than there's a market. So the price of marijuana is dropping because of competition, the raw material costs are dropping, even though it really isn't, the cost isn't dropping, it's just the prices, and the competition is driving other people out. And you're seeing, you probably, you could see one of our three stores closing in Wareham. And to add, to physically add more retail outlets, makes no sense for the town at all right now. It's not going to generate any more income. And the other issue I think we're going to have is, even if that, say, this particular citizen's article got approved, and say, it allows you to have more than three, say they want to add one more to four, because that person wants the store, it doesn't mean that the town has to agree to a host agreement for a fourth one.
Interesting. This is all great information. So moving forward, we were talking earlier before we started recording about another important aspect of town meeting, the points of order. So who's allowed to make a point of order? When are they allowed to make a point of order? And is there anybody not allowed to make a point of order?
So in terms of points of order, again, the registered voters that are there, someone could stand up and make a point of order.
What's really the effect of that? Like, what's it trying to do?
Well, I guess I can't get in the heads of the people making the point of order. They're looking for a ruling from the town moderator on something that they say is not a correct procedure. Point of order, the previous speaker, or whatever, they weren't talking about the article, they were talking outside the scope of the article, when they mentioned, when they talked about dog parks, when the article was about solar panels, that sort of thing. And so I would make a ruling on whether the speaker was, who had made that off-topic discussion, whether they're out of order, out of order or not. So basically, anyone can do that, and then I would have to make a ruling as to what their point is.
Excellent.
The other place where that comes up, sort of, it's not directly related to motions, the, most of the articles, at least in the last few years, have been voted by a voice vote, it's fairly clear, oftentimes, the yeses and the nos. If it's a close question, then I would call for a hand count, and people raise their cards, and the tellers that are volunteers that are there will go and make it count, and it actually becomes a numbered count. Someone can stand up and say they challenge the ruling that I might make on a voice vote. If at least seven voters all pop up, then it would go to, it has to go to a, it has to go to a hand count.
I see, and certain articles, given their nature, might have to have two-thirds vote.
Correct.
Rather than just a majority. So you have some math to do back there sometimes.
Right, so zoning bylaws are the major one, those require two-thirds vote. A vote to transfer money out of the stabilization fund, which is kind of, for lack of a better term, the town's rainy day fund, that requires a two-thirds, two-thirds vote. There's some other kind of oddball situations which require four of this and nine counts. So on the zoning, yeah, on the zoning, unless it's unanimous, or pretty close to, my approach is to ask for a hand count, especially since the zoning bylaws are looked at, zoning bylaw changes are something that are looked at fairly closely by the Attorney General's office when it goes up. So you don't want to have a question mark as to whether there was really two-thirds or not.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, what happened when the Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen Bulevo, they were looking at ways to make life easier for municipalities. So they came up with a community compact, and a couple other different programs, and one of the programs took, they were trying to get housing, to increase housing. Housing is a big issue in Massachusetts, probably everywhere else, but affordable housing, I should say, and housing in general. So they went into a lot of the zoning articles, realizing that the two-thirds majority required was becoming extremely difficult to get through, and the majority of the zoning articles for housing were failing. So they took, again, the moderator has to go through it, but they took a whole series of zoning articles under a certain categories, and changed it from two-thirds to simple majority. And that just recently happened, like a couple years ago. And I think a lot of people don't know that, but the moderator will, at the time of the voting, before the actual vote, will remind everybody, this is either a two-thirds or a simple majority. And I would say that 99% of the people sitting at town meeting don't know which is which.
So, yeah, I don't think I want to disparage 99% of the town meeting voters, but none of them.
I can do it, I'm running again.
So, Mr. Slaven makes a good point, so it's, it probably is one of those gray area things, but the legislation that he was just talking about, things related to residential housing can require a majority vote versus a two-thirds. And the, I will say that at the beginning of any particular article, but it's actually the planning board that makes that determination. So on a zoning by, let me just diverge a little bit, on a zoning bylaw change, the planning board is required to give a report to the town meeting, having had their appropriate hearings, et cetera. And if there is an issue that comes up, whether it's majority or two-thirds, the planning board report should include whether they've made a determination with, is this one of those majority ones, or is it a two-thirds one?
Yeah, the planning board has to do, I think, 14 days before town meeting, they have to make sure they have their public hearing, and also then they have to have a regular, you will see a lot of times, just before town meeting starts, that the finance committee, the Board of Selectmen, and sometimes the planning board having meetings in the cafeteria or whatever, last minute, you know, for actual votes. But again, it's not a public, it's not a public hearing, because it doesn't qualify, and I think it's 14 days. It's interesting, because I watch the planning board a lot of times, and there are times the planning board votes, and they forget, it's either a two-thirds or a simple majority also. Because it wasn't made very clear to the municipalities, "Hey, by the way, here's this new rule and stuff." We weren't trained on it, put it that way.
Not at all. I think a lot of, I think all the towns that had to deal with this, I know from speaking to the previous town moderator, were really scrambling to get advice as to how to handle that, the new legislation. So I think that settled in a bit. I don't think the planning board, the planning board is supposed to make their vote within the time to just discuss, so I don't see them meeting at the last minute.
They do.
Ah, in any event, I don't, in all that.
That's for another show.
That's for another show.
What happened there is, usually the chair of the planning board cuts up and speaks on the article, if it's, you know, because, let me go back just a minute to make life a little simple for people. We have what we call a legislative pilot government and the executive branch of government. It's never made clear, I'm not sure the school even teaches this anymore, you know, as far as kids even understanding it. Most likely, their parents probably don't understand it. Sorry, people. But basically, the legislative branch of government is our town meeting, is our finance committee, our capital planning committee, and the planning board. The planning board is actually the board, as a legislative branch of government, that brings forth all the zoning articles. So if conservation has something they want, they're supposed to bring it up through the planning board. If the zoning wants something done, same thing. So you have these four boards technically that are executive, excuse me, for the Slavers, and everybody else that's part of the executive branch, town minister, all these other committees, boards, whatever. So you have to understand this, there is a division of government we have, and who does what, where. I think a lot of people forget that the planning board is part of the legislative branch of government, and is the one that required to bring the zoning articles forward.
There's that piece. The other piece that I was talking about, the report to the town meeting, it's actually required by state law, that's a Massachusetts general law.
So, moving forward, we've gone through some of these motions, we've talked about who can make motions and when. I want to touch quickly on, say, I don't live in Wareham, but I have a business in Wareham, and I also have a vested interest in another article that might affect my business. I want to attend Wareham Town Meeting. How, as an out-of-towner, non-registered voter, how do I speak my piece?
So, first of all, you signed in to come, certainly a business owner or any visitor is welcome to attend the town meeting, but obviously, they're not voters, so they're not entitled to vote, they're not entitled to speak. However, you can ask for permission from the body, the town meeting, to address a particular article which is of concern to you. Usually, that happens with someone that is actually a town meeting voter, or maybe a department head would say, "I'm asking that so-and-so who owns a business on Main Street, you know, be allowed to speak on this article." And almost always, I will put that to a vote of the town meeting body, and almost always, they'll say yes, they'll extend that courtesy, and then you can, and then you can speak, you know, ask your concerns, pro con, whatever. There are certain folk... There are certain folks, um, consultants for the town, engineers, that sort of thing, that even though those people oftentimes, the engineers are oftentimes not, um, registered voters in Wareham, that, um, uh, usually it's someone that is a, uh, a department head or a county official or asset. They'd be recognized. And I use my discretion just to recognize them because I think that oftentimes they bring information to the, the body, to the town meeting that's going to be abused when they, when they decide to vote.
Right.
I think the simplest thing, uh, for someone in that situation is to get a town meeting member to get up and ask that my time be given to so and so, you know, to speak on it. As Margaret says, it's very rare that we don't allow someone to speak because I think that's just simply rude.
Yeah, it's a courtesy. I, I think of it as a courtesy to, to a business owner, for instance.
It's not even that. It's other, you're physically there, you know, you have an interest or a vested interest, whatever. I get all the time, I still, people say, well, you know, I own a house here and stuff, but I can't go to town meeting and vote. But I, I give you all this money and I don't really require any services and all these other things. It's, I know, but you know, it's, it's just the way it is. He says, well, why can't I, at least for town meeting, come vote? And I said, because the way the law is written. If you want a petition, uh, Commonwealth of Massachusetts to change the laws, fine. And I says, I've looked into this before and this was, I forget one, which feels somewhere in Connecticut. They actually, the town allows residents that own property, even if it's not where they're registered to vote, to go to their town meeting and vote. It's the only one I found anywhere.
Interesting.
It's never been, it had to be done locally passed because it wasn't by the state, obviously. But it's, it's an answer when someone asks me, I don't have a good answer for no. You know, because, you know, they give me all the reasons why they should and technically, you know, it's, it should be a right of theirs, but you can't vote twice.
Right, right.
So that's the way, that's the way it is. And it's really not, it's not equitable because you're paying the same thing as someone sitting on the other, on the other section of, of town meeting. You pay all the same expenses and everything, but you've got nothing to say at the end of the day. So that's just one of the inequities of town meeting under Commonwealth of Massachusetts laws.
Yeah. So we're in the middle of March. Spring is upon us, which means we're close to 2024 spring town meeting. Are there any articles that are going to be on the warrant of note that people should be looking out for?
I'm the moderator, so I, um.
You're kind of neutral.
So I do not speak to pros, cons, whatever on, um, articles?
I, I would say that this particular town meeting, uh, I don't really see anything coming forward that is written that's really a problem. Even any, there's, I think there's a zoning article that might be a little, uh, isn't there one about, uh, accessory apartments? Or is that the state level? Something happened with accessory apartments, make them easier to do because they've been hard to do. But, but I would say overall, this one.
Not here though.
Yeah, it should be pretty much straightforward. The other thing that we don't discuss yet is special town meeting. Now, special town meeting sounds, what the hell is that? Well, what happens is a lot of times, uh, if you have certain things you have to go and do. And if you, if you're, if the thing you want to do for town, for the expenses, whatever, is on town meeting, the monies can't be spent and things can't be done till July 1st of 2024 because technically it's in the budget of fiscal year 25. So sorry, people, but just because you're in 24 doesn't mean you're in fiscal year 25. It's confusing. So we will put, we have some articles for 20 special town meeting, which actually get before regular town meeting is the way it works. And the moderator handles the one to the other, switching over. So what happens is, uh, say they, the, the school wants to buy a couple of buses or something, a few other things, and they decide to put it on the special. So you get, you vote on that before the regular town meeting. And if it passes Tommy, the day afterwards, technically, they can go buy the buses and spend the money. So that's something that comes up. And I think there's a few things there, but again, uh, I didn't see anything, you know, water pollution control facility or anything that's, uh, you know, confrontational or, uh, needs more information or whatever else. It's pretty straightforward. And, uh, but that's the reason for special town meeting is to get things passed that can be immediately acted on after town meeting. Because whatever happens at town meeting on the regular warrant, nothing happens till July 1st of 2024.
Right.
You can't do anything.
The beginning of the year.
And I think that's an area that people do not understand because it's never really explained. I don't think it's explained. I don't think the, again, I'll, I'll pick on the schools. I don't think they educate, uh, kids on local government. I don't think that's part of the curriculum anymore, which is a shame because they could probably educate their parents.
So we're kind of running short of time here. So is there anything else either of you want to add to this discussion before we sign off?
No. Actually, for me, I'll tell you one thing, I'll interrupt, Margaret. I think it's extremely important that you have a very rare privilege in life that you can come and vote and control what happens in your town. There are countries all over the world you can see where the people are killing each other, fighting and everything else. And they don't really have a chance to vote because the vote's controlled by whoever runs their government. Or if they try and vote the wrong way, they get shot or whatever, all these horrible things in life. And this country gives you not only options at the top level, but actually at the most closest level to how you live your daily life and you have a chance to have a say. And for those of you who don't step up and vote because you don't think it's worthwhile or whatever else, you're making a huge mistake in life because it does count and you can make a difference. So step up and make a difference.
Well said.
Very good.
Any final words?
Step up and make a difference. The annual town meeting is Monday, April 22nd of this year, obviously, um, at 7:00 PM at the Wareham High School Auditorium.
Are you still doing the moderator stuff for the water, fire water?
Pardon me?
You don't do the moderator for the.
No. The moderator, the moderator for the, um, for the annual Wareham Fire District meeting, which is a separate government entity, um, they have a little different setup. So they nominate and elect at the district meeting who is going to be the moderator at that particular meeting. And it's usually Peter Belsarini. I'm calling you out, Peter, um, and not myself. So it's not automatic. Just because you're town moderator, you go over and become, not at all.
And very quickly, in Wareham and other, there's other towns, we have what we call districts. A district is a completely separate entity from the municipality. They, people have to understand that they're their own government. They don't fall under proposition two and a half, which is a huge benefit for them. Like the municipalities do, but they are not, they're not related. They don't, it's like two circles, wheels that never touch. So you also have people, uh, I think it's April 13th in the Wareham Fire and Water District. There's a, an election and vote and they have their own town meeting separately. And the same thing for Hudson. Thankfully, we're not like Bonstal, which has six, uh, fire and wat, fire districts. Which really is wonderful. So again, you've got two, you have, depending where you live, you have two chances to go individual town meetings for the district for one and for the town. And again, you really should do stuff because the fire water district has a direct effect on your pocket wallet as well.
Absolutely. So this has been a really informative discussion. So thank you both for, for taking the time out and coming down to 505 Main and our, uh, WCTV studio here. So Alan, thanks for your information and a good discussion. Margaret, maybe we'll see you at town meeting? I guess probably we definitely will see you at town meeting.
I think you shall.
Alan, we will, uh, see you in a couple of weeks to do another show.
Yes, and, uh, I think it's really important that we make sure we get this out as early as we can. I reached out to Liam at Wareham Wiggel. I think it's the editor for the Wareham Branch Tower. And I let them know that we're going to do it. So I was hoping he'd come and actually sit, listen in and do an article. But he said he'll, uh, put something in the newspaper. But I think it's really important that it gets out when we're going to have this TV program available to the public to see.
Great.
I'd love to see if there's a possibility of getting it up onto the Wareham town website as well as the like, get a hold of Matt O'Nahill, see if they'll do it.
Yeah. He's a good friend of ours.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this is, this is not politically motivated. This is not something we're getting points or paid or anything else. I think this is just important, uh, that we try and help the citizens understand how this really works. Because I think it's something that's been missed for years.
Excellent. Oh, thank you both again. And thank you all for watching. Uh, I am Jeff Wyman with WCTV and this has been Real Wareham. Thank you.